Let's call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Are there any changes to the consent agenda? If not, I have one change. We're going to move the Public Safety Transportation Committee minutes and move them up into the consent agenda tonight. So I take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved?
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not called the roll, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Totally forgot to read them, sorry. Out of my stuff. Do you want me to read them now? We should read them for the public. Approval of the minutes at the February 24th council meeting. Approval of March 6, 2020 payroll in the amount of $126,191.87. Resolution authorizing fund transfers. A resolution approving promotion in the police department. Approval of liquor license for Quality Quick Stop and Fairfield Golf and Country Club. And approval of total claims in the amount of $624,863.09 with one claim over $75,000 to Maxwell Construction in the amount of $291,144.5. Okay. We'll go to public appearances and we have Heidi Lane and Dustin. Dustin Lane here for their honey bee hives. They were here a couple of weeks ago.
That's right. So I'm Heidi Lane and we're just back again after having gotten some feedback from our neighbors about the beehives that I provided to you. So if anyone has any questions.
Sounds like you got positive feedback from your neighbors.
Yes.
I move that we approve placement of the beehive as indicated on their prior submission. Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy to approve the beehives. Any discussion? Not? Let's call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck Heidi and Dustin.
The bees could come.
We hope they do well because we need more. Next on the agenda for public appearances, we have Chris Estle from the Jefferson County Public Health and also we're going to hear from Stacy Worley from Jefferson County Health This is on the coronavirus. We've had some questions from the public about what the city is doing or what our community's doing, so we invited them here to come and share their information.
Well, thank you for having us. I think I know everybody here, but I'm Chris Estle. I'm the Public Health Administrator for Jefferson County.
I'm Stacy Worley, the Education and Emergency Room Director at Jefferson County Health Center.
So I guess I just want to let you all know that when this very first started happening in China before it had left the perimeters of that country, public health departments had been watching what was going on across the world. And we had, I reached out to Stacy and we had several meetings prior to it being on anybody's radar here. So we had several meetings with, you know, school partners, business partners. We tried to answer questions and at that time that was really before the state health department was releasing information. So I took it upon myself to release my own press release, which is totally appropriate. And then after we started to get more questions and we saw the disease progress or the virus progress and people become ill, then that's when the state started to issue what we call canned press releases for the 99 health departments. So I don't know where to start. I mean, everybody's education level is different when it comes to healthcare. I don't want to bore everybody. I don't want to stress everybody out and cause fear and panic. I think the thing to remember is there's seven different types of a coronavirus. Doug, I'm sure you can like speak to this probably better than Stacy and I can. Four of which are very common and they circulate and most of us have probably had one at some point in our lives. It acts like the, you know, common cold, runny nose, not very symptomatic. You have it and you probably don't even know what caused your illness. There's three that are very, that are more severe. So one being SARS in the early 2000s, we were first introduced to that virus. At that time I worked in our emergency department at night, so this isn't the first time we've been through something like this. It's progression. Then we saw MERS or MERS, however you choose to pronounce it, in the Middle East. We were not involved with that. There were no cases of that in Iowa as far as I know. And then now we have this COVID-19, the coronavirus 19. Now we're calling it COVID-19 because it was unnamed, so it was trending. Even in the media, it's difficult. We still want to call it a coronavirus, but now actually COVID-19. So we have, right before Stacy and I got here, the governor declared a state of emergency. Wait, what? The governor declared a state of emergency. I don't know if you guys saw that or not, but what that means is it sets aside extra dollars and funding in special situations for local responders to mitigate the response effort with that. There are eight cases, presumptive cases, that are positive in the state right now. Seven of which.
You keep saying cough.
Seven of which.
You knew I was going to cough.
Coughed that way. Seven of which are in Johnson.
He's my boss.
Seven of which are in Johnson County and one being in Potawatomi County.
Christie, when did the governor declare the state?
It was like, I was watching the national news. I got this. Yes, I shared it on our Facebook page. It was this evening. So in the last week and a half, the state hygienic lab, or SHL as we call it, there's two state hygienic labs in Iowa, one at the Oakdale campus and one in Ankeny. One at the Oakdale campus is now able to perform testing. We don't have to send out to the CDC, which is in Atlanta. However, they will send these tests off for confirmation at the CDC. That's what we're waiting on. That's why we haven't heard, you know, 100%. Sir, would you please?
One more, I get a mask.
No.
So tell us again about the testing. When is it, where is the testing available?
It's at the state hygienic lab in Iowa City, at Coralville. It's out on the Oakdale campus, which is like across from the prison. So it's just north of Iowa City there in Coralville. It's a nasal pharyngeal swab. Stacy, do you want to speak to that?
It's very similar to the flu swab. It's actually the same flu swab kit that we use for both. Originally went before the state hygienic lab was able to perform that testing, the Iowa Department of Public Health had indicated that if we were to send a sample off to CDC, we were looking at about a 48-hour turnaround time. And with us being able to do it in the state, at the state hygienic lab, that time is cut down like to around four to six hours once they receive the sample. So it's definitely cut down on time. They are going with those results from the state hygienic lab, but like Chris said, they also are sending those off to CDC for confirmation.
Excuse me, as with influenza, we see thousands and thousands of people die annually from influenza. And you know, Stacy and I both were nurses when the H1N1 scenario took place just a few short years ago, it seems like just last week. And in that situation, there was a vaccine that was available in very limited supply and you had to meet specific criteria to even receive that vaccine at that time. And at the end of that, when it was all said and done, we threw away hundreds of doses of vaccine because once it was out of the media limelight and people were healthy, out of sight, out of mind, nobody cares. So I can't stress it enough that you have to look at the factual information. We use the CDC's website and the Iowa Department of Public Health's website. There's lots of information that's out there, some of which is fake information, fake news as we all know. I will say though, the health department has received lots and lots of calls, a very concerned, very less than polite individuals. And everybody is so worried about what somebody else is doing that they're really not worried about what they're doing themselves. So like, we'll get a phone call and say, oh, well, what's Dave doing? What's Stacy doing? You know, what's Michael doing? And it's like, okay, what are you doing to help prevent the spread of illness? And what are you doing to take care of your people that you work with or that you care for? So we've had, like I said, we've had meetings with all of our community partners, both in town, on campus, and I can't stress it enough, I have a great relationship with Dr. Bell, with the campus nurse, Vina Miller. I mean, I've met with, I've talked to Dr. Knoll several times. I think I talk to Stacy a couple of times a day. I just, I think people need to understand that it's not if it comes to Fairfield, it's when it comes to Fairfield. Because it will eventually be everywhere, just like every other virus is. Doug, can you speak to that maybe? I just want to.
That's what I put on Facebook. Eventually, everybody's going to have it. It's just a matter of time.
Well, it is. It is. It's true. And that's how we build antibodies, is by exposure. And that's, I don't want to get into a vaccine debate because I don't have enough time for that today, but there's vaccines available for many, many preventable diseases and illness and people choose to exempt themselves from those immunizations. So you can't make somebody do anything. However, as employers, as public health and as hospital officials, we have to think about, okay, if people are all wearing masks, that's going to create a problem for Stacy's world.
It does. So what we know is PPE is important, so personal protective equipment. We know that from law enforcement to EMS to the hospitals. And we can only do that if we have. And if you've been to Walmart in the last two weeks, you know that there are no masks because I went not even looking for masks and heard it multiple times, there's no masks here at Walmart. You can't get any masks. People are looking on eBay and buying a box of 50 that would normally cost less than $10 and now they're, you know, $50, $60, $70 for masks.
Supply and demand.
Correct. So in reality, IDPH CDC is not recommending that everybody walking around wear a mask. Those individuals that have immunity issues, that have a low immune system that can't fight things off, those people should be wearing masks. Healthcare providers that are in close contact with patients should be wearing masks. But we've had multiple people come and just take boxes of masks and walk out of the hospital because we've always provided them at kiosks for if you have a fever and a cough before coronavirus or COVID-19 to help fight the influenza. We've provided those things. Now we're handing them out and rationing them. Not that we won't give you one if you come in with those symptoms, but we just don't want everybody walking away with them or with a handful or a box full.
It gives people a false sense of security because you have a mask on, A, you might not have it on correctly, B, it's probably not the correct form of mask because everything is a different size, so it's going to filter through that mask because all these particles are circulating in the air, viruses, bacteria. Everything has a different filtration point. Hey, I'm not, I'm just a nurse, Doug, okay? So but.
Look, please, you're doing fine.
I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm feeling squat, no. But I think it gives everybody a false sense of security. Then once the mask gets damp on the inside, it basically becomes a reservoir for every other germ that you're rebreathing. So that is not a good situation. So you see people walking around with masks on. We see people walking around with masks in Asian countries, but part of that is because of the air quality in their home country. So a couple of quick things and then we'll let you guys ask some questions. I don't know what else you want me to do. The first thing is hand washing, okay? We talked about this today when I was at one of the schools. Hand washing is very, very important. You need to use a hand sanitizer that has 60% alcohol in it. In Iowa, we see things made with ethanol, which is alcohol, but I just want to say that that is alcohol, okay? Somebody called me and said, well, this only has ethanol in it. And I said, yes, that is alcohol. So make sure it has 60%, if you can still get it at the store. Hand washing is better than hand sanitizer. Even if you don't have any soap, hand washing is better than hand sanitizer. It's the friction in which you clean your hands with under the water. Doesn't matter what kind of soap you have or if you don't even have soap, and washing your hands frequently. Keeping your hands away from your face, your mouth, your nose, your T-zone. You want me to scooch up? The T-zone that you have. And I'm just, I'm just watching all you guys. Everybody's, not everybody, but people are coughing.
How frequently?
You have your hands under their face. I wash my hands a lot during the day. Before I eat anything, before I go to the restroom, I usually wash my hands. I wash them after I go to the restroom, before I take a drink. Ask Stacy, I'm like the germ. I was a germ freak before, so now I just wash my hands even more.
Wash your hands when you walk into your home? After you take a shower?
Oh, Vina, hey! Yeah, exactly. Don't eat anything before you wash your hands. Something else that we talked about today at the school was, you know, we all have backpacks or briefcases or purses. That's fine if you set them on the floor, but when you get them home, do not put them on your kitchen table or your kitchen counter. Where should you set them? On the floor or on the chair, okay? Before you prepare any meals, make sure you wash off your counters. Make sure you wash your fruits and vegetables, everything that you have at the store. I do know that some of the stores are not allowing food sampling, which I think should be outlawed on a good day anyway because we have the same issues. Let's see, Stace, what else? Social distancing, six feet apart from individuals. Six feet is actually a long distance when you think about how far six feet is. Stay home if you're sick.
That's a big thing. If you have a fever, and healthcare providers are notorious for this because we need to take care of people, but if you have a fever and you have a cough, you need to stay at home. If you have employees that show up that have a fever and have a cough, they need to go home. Whether it's COVID-19, whether it's influenza, you don't want everyone else getting ill as well. Those are the big things I know that we've been stressing at the health center.
What can we answer specifically for you guys?
I think, Chris, some of the questions that I've been getting are these test kits.
Right.
You know.
Per the.
What, where are they? Do we have any?
Well, okay.
What's the process? And also if it comes to our community in a big way, what's the preparation at the hospital? Will most people stay home depending on if they can? I assume if they get really bad, they'll go to the hospital, right?
Absolutely.
Right.
So let's start with the test kits first. That's a very good question. Like I indicated just a little while ago, the state hygienic lab, SHL, is just now being able to perform the test within the last 10 days to two weeks. They said the other day on a webinar, there are 250 test kits in one package or one full container, so to speak. There's no indication at this time that there's a shortage of test kits. Right now, if it's under, if the patient, the patient has to be seen by a provider, whether it's a physician, PA, nurse practitioner, they don't want just everybody just walking up to the window going, hey, I want, I want to get a test for COVID-19. You don't do that with anything else, so you're not going to be able to do that with this virus as well. There is some discussion that it will be available in the private sector, of course it will be. So we're going to be dealing with, is my insurance going to cover this? How much is this going to cost? How much am I going to have to pay out of pocket? I'm just the public health administrator. I don't know anything about that yet because it's not been released by the feds, but I do know like lab work companies and other private companies are going to be able to do testing.
But my understanding is they're not testing in Iowa.
Right.
Like they would have to go outside of Iowa, so the turnaround time is going to be an issue there. And currently, the process looks like you have to meet the screening questions. So have you been outside of the United States in the last 21 days? These are the questions that we ask everyone, whether they're walking in our door for an appointment, whether they call to make an appointment when you come to the emergency room. We're asking everyone that walks in, have you been out of the country in the last 21 days? If they answer yes, then we want to know what country. If they answer no, we also want to know if they've been exposed to anyone that has lab confirmed COVID-19. Those are the questions that we've been directed by CDC and Iowa Department of Public Health to be screening for. If any of those questions, or if those questions are yes, then the question, then that person then would get screened by a healthcare provider because registration is asking these questions so that we're making sure that we catch everybody. So at that point, that healthcare provider would mask the patient, get them in an isolated room, and then ask further in-depth questions. And depending on what the answers to those questions are, prompts us to call the state Department of Health. And it's with their confirmation or input that we then decide whether we will be able to test an individual or not. So it's a lengthy process. It's not something that just, you know, someone walks in the door. There's a lot of questions depending on the situation as to whether that person will get tested or not.
Do they have, do you have symptoms?
Will you guys stand closer to the microphone when you're talking?
Sorry. Sorry.
Thank you.
That's a great question, Vina. I know the change, almost every hour stuff can change. The CDC is very concerned as we are, as far as community spread goes. So if I'm standing this close to Stacy, I could give her whatever, you know, we all know that, however that works, you know, airborne, drop blood, all these contact precautions, all of this. So I think we, I just encourage people to check the CDC's website several times a day because updates are made very frequently. Go ahead, Stace.
Currently, our direction has been is that if they've answered yes to travel or been exposed to someone and have had a subjective or objective fever, so meaning they feel like they're feverish, or they've actually taken their temperature and have a fever and have respiratory symptoms, then we continue on with the screening and potentially testing.
So does that mean if someone has symptoms and they haven't been out of the country? Or they haven't knowingly been around someone, then they're not going to get tested?
No, that's, that is, I will say that that is incorrect because we've had instances in the state where an individual had no travel exposure or no contact with an individual, but I know that an individual has been tested based on that physician's assessment and then that physician talked to the state, that physician talked to Dr. Padati, who was our state physician, and they determined at that time that patient was so acutely ill that testing needed to be performed to rule everything else out.
But that would not be every person.
No.
That has a low-grade fever.
Right.
Or a little bit of a cough. The person had acutely ill symptoms.
Was very, very ill.
She was very, very ill, so.
That's what we've been told.
Yeah, so to say that no one that hasn't had, or no one that's traveled and had a known contact will never be tested is not the case. Some of it depends on the symptoms and the findings based on their assessment.
So if you can't answer the questions, then you have to have acute symptoms.
What happens is, it's just like donating blood. You know, you're going to answer these baseline questions and then you're going to stick your finger and see what your hemoglobin level is. And if your hemoglobin level's okay, then you can donate. So you're going to get basic screening questions, then you're going to get another level of questions, and then, then you're going to see a provider. You're going to see a provider anyway. That's why you have to be seen by a medical provider. That's why you're not going to be able to get routine testing, just drive up and say, hey, I want a COVID-19 test. At least not right now. I'm not saying that couldn't happen in a few weeks or months, but not right now.
It's my, I don't want to belabor the point. This will be my last question.
Sure. That's why we're here.
For older people like myself, we are in greater risk.
Correct.
So you're telling me I have to be halfway dead to even be tested.
Those are your words, not mine.
Yes, that's what I understand.
So have you thought about influenza?
The other thing that I understand, and I may be incorrect, the longer you wait, the sicker you become.
That's with any virus or any bacterial infection, especially acute lung issues.
So if I thought I was coming down with it.
You're.
And all my answers were no.
Correct.
I would have to wait until I was.
No, you would have to wait to be seen by a provider and then that physician or nurse practitioner or physician's assistant would base it off of your health history, off of your symptoms or no symptoms, off of other risk factors, okay? If you've been in contact with 25 people that have just flown in from China or just been on a cruise from Egypt area, you're at higher risk. When you go to the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics or you go to Mayo Clinic, you have no idea who you're coming in contact with. I've been to both of those places. You talk about an international germ fest, okay? You have thousands and thousands of people coming in and out of a facility for treatment. That's why you see individuals wearing masks that A, are symptomatic, or B, are so immunocompromised that they have to wear masks for their own protection. So.
So is this because there's a shortage?
No, there's not a shortage at this time of test kits.
And why is such a high volume?
Because in, well, that, this is how it's handled in any situation when there is a new illness. It was the same way with H1N1. When we only had X number of, X number of vaccines available, you had to meet that specific criteria. And if you remember correctly, people over, I think it was the age of 55 or 60, did not get the vaccine because it was thought that they had natural immunity because they had been exposed. The more birthdays we get to celebrate on this planet, the more exposure we've had to certain things, hopefully the better our immune system is. However, there's constantly new viruses coming into play or viruses that mutate and ends up being something different. The zoonotic world, I mean, the animal and the human world is constantly interacting and changing with viruses. And I'm not an epidemiologist, I'm just your public health administrator, but I know hand washing and appropriate personal protective equipment is very, very important. Does that help you? That's, that's all I can say. We have to, I have to follow the rules set forth by my governing entity. Yeah. Bonnie?
I would like to mention also that I received, because I reached out to MIU as well, and you know, they've been working on this issue as well. And I just wanted to read a couple of things from, from their website that they've put out to all their staff and students. You know, they are maintaining and monitoring the guidance from the Iowa Department of Public Health and CDC and coordinates with local public health officials on recommendations for screening and restrictions for any arriving travelers or new students. The entry of new students from China, Iran, South Korea, Italy, and Japan will be postponed until further notice, so they are not allowing any students from those areas to come in. They will consider postponing large-scale events if they feel they need to and working online. Plus, their emergency management group is implementing plans and contingency for screening, medical care, housing, quarantine, travel, study abroad, and study continuity. So that's some, some information from MIU and what's happening there.
And social distancing as well, which is something that you all have decided to be important.
Can you come to the mic, please?
Sure. My name is Vina Miller. I'm one of the nurses at MUM, MIU. So if you imagine six feet apart, what would this room look like if we were all sitting six feet apart? We're considering doing that, excuse me, for groups and for lunches. When people enter for lunches, how will they be spaced so that they don't share each other's germs? But also an important thing to remember is the best way to stay well is to have a strong immune system. So all of the things that you normally would do, eat well, get good sleep, those seem so simple, so foolish, but so important. Also take supplements that you know help you. Vitamin C, zinc, selenium, those are all, vitamin D, those are all really good for keeping your immune system healthy. There are herbal supplements from the Ayurvedic shop in town that are specifically for immunity, bioimmune, cold weather defense. And if you're sick, stay home, but again, what Chris had mentioned, washing your hands is critical. Coughing into your sleeve.
Is critical.
Because otherwise you said.
Who invited all these nurses?
Your mayor did.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I was showing shoes the other day. So when you come to see me, you say, how are you? That's exactly what happens. That's how we spread it. Before you eat, especially in a community setting, wash your hands, use hand sanitizer, which is very hard to get. It is. And then you go to the serving spoons and you pass them along to each other. So these are things that we have to remember all the time. And we're making posters to remind everybody, spring break has been postponed. Any students who travel.
Thank you for that.
Yes. So these we made for ourselves, which are, did you wash your hands? Cough into your elbow, knot your hands. Stay home if you're sick. Remember to tell somebody and remember to eat. This is from the CDC.
Thank you.
Fight the flu, cover your cough, clean your hands, and contain germs. These you can get off the website from the CDC. And this one, we're going to be putting in all the bathrooms, stop the spread of germs. Another one that's really important is to avoid touching your face.
It is.
Because that's how the germs get into you. You pick them up from here and you do this. So it's really important. That's hopefully how we're going to beat this thing.
Right. The one thing that I did thank you, Vina, thank you for all your work and time and chats and all that stuff that nobody really knows about, but we've become quite chatty on the phone, haven't we?
Yes.
The one thing I want to stress to people is make sure if you wear contacts, wash your hands good before you put your contacts in, wash your hands after you put your contacts in. I know that sounds simple, but it needs to be done. Keep your hands, like Vina said, away from your face. Wash your hands, good hand hygiene. I can't stress that enough. I would encourage everybody to go to the CDC's website or the Iowa Department of Public Health website. There's been several webinars that have been recorded for businesses, banks, schools, K through 12, colleges. All that information is there, it's great resources. So it's, it's there and it's ever-changing. And as healthcare professionals and people that really like to control the situation because we think, oh, if we do this and this won't happen, and we really don't have control of where this virus goes. Okay? It's going to go where it wants to go. It's up to us. It's up to you guys to help us in public health and hospital studies to fight it and not have deaths from that. Okay?
One other thing, another thing that we're encouraging, if anyone does come from an area where there is a lot of illness, which is almost everywhere now, if it appears that they have been exposed in any way, we're asking them to self-isolate. That doesn't mean a quarantine, but that means stay in your home, stay in your, it wouldn't be on a dorm, but you know, if they have a home or hopefully someplace they could stay. And have someone bring you your meals. And don't go out, don't go on public transport, which is hard to do in Fairfield.
Yeah, I wish we had some public transport.
Don't go to large gatherings. Stay, stay separate and watch your symptoms, take your, take your temperature twice a day, make sure that you're well. And if you start to feel sick, then as this gentleman was asking, call your health provider and get, you know, get some, some help.
I will say, with the things that we've been through, Stacy and I've been through in the county for our many years of being nurses, we've had measles in Jefferson County, we've had active pulmonary TB, we've had meningitis, we've had pertussis, we've had crypto, we've had Q fever, we've had, you name it, we have had it. We are no different than any other of the 98 counties, so 99 counties. Every county has it. Every county has different communities within their community, and we have different needs and different people that travel to different places, who are a very migrant group of people. One day we're in Little Podunk Fairfield, the next day we're wherever. So people need to be respectful of others' choices and their, the choices that they make and where they have come from and they've come to our community to live. So what else can I answer?
If someone is, has, is coughing or has fever, would you send them to the public health nurse? Would you send them to the hospital? You think that maybe there's something that needs to be checked? Where would you, and they don't know what to do? Where would you send them? Would you tell them to go?
It would depend on the severity of their symptoms. We have had multiple conversations with Iowa Department of Public Health and CDC, and if there's questions, it's very easy to call in and talk with someone, whether that be at the hospital or at public health, to kind of walk us through those things. Because if we remember, in Ebola, we asked everyone to call ahead. You know, if you were concerned that you came from a country that was having that and you had symptoms, we asked everyone to call ahead so that we could be prepared to better care for that person and know what the appropriate room number would be, you know, how to get in so that we're protecting other people as well as the individual who is ill. So if you're, if you're well enough to have a phone conversation, if not, come in. But make sure that whoever you contact first, whether that's EMS, whether that's the emergency room or the clinic, make sure and answer those questions and be as upfront as possible about your travel, the people you've been in contact with, and what your illness and your severity of your illness is. And we just think that the incubation period is up to 14 days. I know with chickenpox, which we don't even think about anymore, but it's still a communicable disease, there's a vaccine available for it, but incubation with chickenpox is 21 days. So we're still learning and this virus is evolving and what I tell you today might be different from tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock.
So two places to call would be EMS or the clinic, hospital?
Well, if, if you're sick, you can call the clinic, Paul, and, but they're going to ask you questions when you call to make an appointment. Because that was part of our very first meeting that we had.
Absolutely, yeah. And, and it does nothing else but help us to plan the care for that patient. Because let's say that someone comes in or calls in and the discussion is, is, okay, potentially, maybe we need to test this patient. They come in, we have them in a separate room, we don't put them in the waiting room with every other individual that's waiting for their well-child appointment, or, you know, they're here because they have a sore throat. We want to make sure that they're isolated, just like-
Neasles.
Yeah, or Vina talked about, you know, staying away for their health as well as everyone else's. And then we do the appropriate testing. If you don't meet, if that person wouldn't meet criteria for admission to the hospital, they're going to go home, get their test results, and then we're going to do the self-monitoring and we're treating symptoms. There's no miracle cure or no cure for this. It's a virus and it's treated symptomatically. So, and everybody unfortunately gets a little bit different version of that, of those symptoms. They're very personal. So unfortunately, it's not cookie cutter. Like, we don't do the same exact thing for every single person because people show up with different symptoms. And so if you're not, just because there would be a positive test doesn't mean that those patients are in the hospital. It just depends on the, of the illness and, and the acuity of it.
If we look at influenza, there's thousands and thousands of people every year that have influenza, even if they have the vaccine or they didn't have the vaccine. But most of those individuals are not hospitalized with influenza, just the people that are very, very acutely ill with some other type of underlying health issue, some type of respiratory problem, immunosuppression in some way, shape, or form. So anything else? We don't want to take your whole meeting, I'm just-
I'd like to say one other thing you may, sorry.
No, I'm glad you're here, Vina. That's great.
You may have experienced in your own households, there are a lot of viruses going around right now. We see students all the time who come in with a cough, a headache, a runny nose, fatigue, muscle aches. They don't have Corona. And it's going to be a little bit difficult to determine because Corona also, it sounds to me like, except for the runny nose, maybe, has a lot of those symptoms. But what I've read, and please tell me if I'm wrong, the shortness of breath is the one thing that sort of differentiates this from the rest of them. You start to really, it's a pneumonia-type feeling, it's a lower respiratory issue. So that's what you want to look for, and you don't have to worry so much if you just feel lousy because you've got the flu or the virus.
Thank you. Anything else before Stacy and I take on?
Additional questions?
Yes.
I guess my question would be not only for you, but also for the council. Are there, are there people that are, that are asking you to be prepared in certain ways in case the numbers just start flying?
So the question is, if this gets to a lot of people, what are the preparations?
Right. Again, it's going to depend on how acutely ill they are. I mean, it's, Dr. Garvey and Dr. Padati said, it is, it is one of those situations where we have to take it case by case because that's actually how it's going to have to be handled. If I were to get it and Stacy were to get it, we would react totally different because we're different people and our bodies have different, you know, coping mechanisms, so to speak, with illness. So I think the, the thing is, there seems to be a lot of, well, you need to have this, this, and this in place. Well, you also have to have the staff to do this, this, and this. You also have to have the infrastructure to do this, this, and this. We are a critical access hospital in a rural community. We do not have, you know, we're not a Level 1 trauma center like the university. It'd be like asking somebody to land a 747 at our airport when it's not capable of doing that. So you have to take it in perspective, and that's when we would depend on our partners to take these patients if they needed to go to an ICU. I'm not answering your question. You just got to be blunt and ask me the question because I can't read mine. So just ask what you want to ask. That's why we're here.
Okay, I'm, I'm speaking, my, my daughter's Vice President for Unit Hospitals Midwest.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm speaking from some of the things she's shared with me. I'm a pastor here in town.
Okay.
I know that there are people in the community that would be willing to help, but I also know that it takes time to build those resources and to-
It does.
Just the databases for, you know, sharing flu numbers or whatever. And so I'm just, I'm foreseeing that the nursing homes are going to need some help. I'm foreseeing that young parents who are working in the nursing home, whose job just got a lot more difficult and whose kids might be exposed, might not want to come to work. Just throwing that out there as an idea. And so just to be able to use some, some foresight and to be able to be prepared with extra inventory, I'm just throwing this out there as an, as an idea.
And I'm, I'm not-
I'm not trying to-
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that conversation could go all on, all night, so, and this is not officially a public hearing. So what I would say is amongst your groups, your churches, you could prepare.
So I think, I think that a couple of things-
And then we'll be done.
Yeah. Depending on what format of healthcare you work in, you, we each have to follow different rules. I work in a critical access facility that follows different healthcare rules than what a Level 1 center does or a tweener or other structures of healthcare facilities. We have our own set of regulations, which means that we can only have certain individuals with certain certifications take care of our patients. So I can't, like the university can pull in someone off the street and train them as a tech and they can take care of those patients. I can't do that in a critical access hospital because we take care of skilled nursing patients, which then changes the level of certification that patients have to have, that we're not allowed to change. Long-term care facilities also have their own set of regulations of who can come in and help care for those patients. I would say that we are across the state all looking at what equipment that we have, what PPE we are, that is available, which is very few to try and get across.
Every week, we have to fill out a questionnaire with those, that information sent to the state.
Correct. And so as-
I want to explain what PPE is.
Personal protective equipment. So if there was one section of the state that it got hit harder, we, the state knows what we have because we do, we do a count every week and turn that in. So while I agree that there's a lot of prep and planning, we've been doing a lot of prep and planning for several weeks across the board that's behind the scenes.
With, with our nursing homes, assisted livings, EMS, fire, law enforcement, and our emergency management coordinator, and our schools and businesses. So I would encourage you to call Brett Farrell, he's our emergency management coordinator. We can, you know, include the Ministerial Association at the next meeting, that's totally fine. So anything else, Mayor?
Any other questions?
Thanks, thanks, Mayor, for allowing them to speak. I just wanted to say that we had citizens who are concerned and we wanted to make, they wanted to make sure that our city and our county is aware and prepared, and it seems like we are. And try to, if they're concerned that we're kind of ahead of it, maybe it's moving so fast we can only stay with it. But that was, that was the concern expressed by citizens to me, and it seems like we're, you guys are on top of it.
Well, we, we've been trying and, you know, it's going to move quickly, it's going to move, as we've already seen, it's moved quickly in the last 24 hours in the state of Iowa. So again, use your own judgment when traveling. If you want to travel, fine, just know when you come back home, you might have to be in self-quarantine for 14 days, whether you want to be or not. So thanks, you guys, for your time, thank you for your support to the local public health and hospital. I'm sorry that we talked so long, but you know how to find us if you need us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I think we are a caring community and there, there could be a group that wants to get together and talk about how to support each other if they've got issues in their families, a Facebook group, for example, you know, that kind of thing. So I would encourage the churches and organizations to, you know, rally around each other.
Thank you.
And one last thing for, from what the state public health has said in their, in their posts online, is to prepare for this as if it was a snow emergency or whatever you think, you know, your kids might be out of school. You're, you might not be able to go to work if you've been exposed or if you feel sick. So try to imagine what kind of food you would need to get in the house, you know, water, just whatever you think you might need to be ready for a week or however long it might take, 14 days.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to our resolution, action items, and ordinances. First action item, consideration of a standard consultant contract with Cheyev Hattery for the South Highway 1 Improvement Project, I think. Is Nathan here?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Nathan Hardisty, I'm the project manager for Cheyev Hattery for the Highway 1 Improvements. Tonight you have in front of you a professional services agreement or the remainder of the design phase. So we did have one previous kind of a concept phase where we did a traffic study and coordinated with the DOT and some landowners on what we might like to see out there. So now we're moving into the real meat of the design and this would, contract has everything in it right up to bid day and start of construction. So to give you a brief reminder, Highway 1, this project is from Libertyville Road to Fillmore Avenue. The plan is for a new roundabout to be installed at Libertyville Road and Highway 1, and then north of there, the road would be widened to three lanes to include one lane in each direction plus a center two-way left-turn lane. Again, the design or the agreement includes the right-of-way plating, the preliminary and final design, as well as coordination with DOT, utility companies, et cetera. Schedule, we are going to start right-of-way. We hope to have the plating ready for right-of-way acquisition by around June or July. The goal is to have the right-of-way acquired by the end of the year. Utility relocation then would take place in 2021, followed by construction in the construction season of 2022. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you had.
Any questions, Council? Okay, entertain a motion to move this forward.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any further questions or discussion? If not, please call the roll. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Plornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Next item, consideration of a standard consultant contract with French Reniker for the 4th Street resurfacing project. And we have Marcus, is that correct?
Yes. Good evening. I'm here to talk about the Port Street resurfacing project that's from Broadway to the South BN SF right-of-way. This project consists of patching and doing some HMA overlay and improving the sanitary sewer and water from Grimes to Depot. This product, the utilities will be paid for by each department and the roadway is 100% funded by the swap funds and STBG funds. The schedule of this project is to let this project in the fall, following the Iowa DOT letting process, and the construction will take the following spring or summer of 2021. And the estimated construction cost of this project is $724,000 and our ESA is for $84,772.26. Do you have any questions on this ESA?
Are the engineering fees covered by the grant as well?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Anderson. Or, excuse me, yeah. Moved by Hallie, second by Anderson. Any other questions?
It's amazing what calls I love.
Yeah, sorry about that. I don't know how that happened. Any other questions or discussions? Please call the roll. Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Plornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay. Consideration of authorization, authorization of change order for the Jefferson Street project, I think Melon is going to talk about that.
So right at the beginning of the year, we had a letting for asphalt overlay of seal coat streets. That project was awarded to Norris Asphalt and included about nine blocks of seal coat overlay. The bids came in near the engineer's estimate, but under what was in the budget, in, in the fiscal year 20 budget-
The ESA you have in front of you is for $82,216.70, and that's for design, EDC, construction optimization. And then we have a subconsultant on this project to do some HMA plant monitoring, since it's a little bit of a HMA project that the DOT partners, HMA plant monitoring for this project. So any other questions on this ESA?
What was the construction schedule?
It's the same as the other one, which was let in November and then construct in spring and summer, or spring and September, depending on the contractor of 2021.
Motion to approve.
Approved by Anderson. Second. Second by Ham. Any other questions? If not, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay. Consideration of authorization of change order for the Jefferson Street project. I think Melanie is going to talk about that.
So right at the beginning of the year, we had a letting for asphalt overlay of seal coat streets. That project was awarded to Norris Asphalt and included about nine blocks of seal coat overlay. The bids came in near the engineer's estimate, but under what was in the budget, in the fiscal year '20 budget for these projects combined, what was budgeted was $210,000, and the bids came in at $132,000. So in discussion with the street department, we decided to add another 700 feet of seal coat overlay on 12th Street from Stone to Carpenter. This will be done at the unit prices that were from the bid back in January. And so the final change order amount is $46,682.65, which is why we are bringing it to the council for approval.
Any questions?
The money was already budgeted, so it's just a... Because the bid came in low, we're extending the project. So I move approval.
Motion by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Toohill?
Just one quick question. Where is Jefferson Street?
I think that on this change order, I copy and pasted from an old project, and it should actually be the 2020 overlay.
Okay. I didn't know we had a Jefferson Street in Fairfield.
Jefferson Avenue, it was...
It's one of those.
Except it was a bad copy-paste job.
All right, just making sure. Sorry, I'm very shy.
And then I didn't check the agenda when we made the agenda item. I thought maybe it was a- I copied what I told when I sent her, so...
I was making sure, I wasn't missing something.
No.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this change order. There's no other discussion, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy? So we have a resolution. Consideration of providing for the financial support of the Regional Planning Affiliation. It's Area 15. This is our annual support for Iowa Department of Transportation planning. And basically, our match is $1,762. We anticipate that the Area 15 will receive $2.4 million of almost $200,000 will come to Fairfield. And the administrative part is that $1,762. So I would entertain a motion to approve that.
The move approved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Next resolution, consideration of providing for the financial support of the Area 15 Regional Planning Commission. This is our annual support. We agreed to contribute 49 cents per capita. So our total is $4,637.36. And that goes from July 1 of 2020 through June 30 of 2021. So I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
The move approved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other questions, discussion? If not, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go to the proposed 2021 budget. Before I open the public hearing, I'll let Aaron, if you want to, just do a quick summary.
Sure. Will you pull up the letter there? Generally, the 2020 and 21 budget is reflected in our budget. The total revenues is $59,497,000. Total expenditures is around $59,391,000. General fund revenue is $6,463,000. Along with expenditures, it's $6 million. I can actually read that from here. General fund has had about $1 million to $1 million and a half of increased expenses because of the possible addition of a department, which we don't know exactly for sure if we're taking that on. So I don't want to completely say that's what we're doing. So that was the big expenditure and big expense in general fund. Other notable expenses are the 2.5% increase for employees, 6% increase in the cost of healthcare insurance, and then, of course, then a possible addition of emergency medical services. So in general, the cost for general fund has been pretty, not necessarily stagnant, but have been fairly well-controlled from my perspective with all the department heads. Revenue, it wasn't as much as what we thought or was hoping for through the levy, but we're able to make it work with our cash on hand compared and with the revenue coming in. So as Paul had mentioned from the last meeting, in all, all in all, it's a very well-budgeted or balanced budget that we've put together.
Thank you. So now, open the public hearing. Are there any comments from the public regarding the budget? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And let's go on to the resolution of the 2021 budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Gandy. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
And next, we have the Capital Improvement Plan. Anything that... Okay, Melanie?
Yeah, just a couple of things I want to point out. Since the purpose of the Capital Improvements Plan, or the CIP, is to supplement the budget by providing a specific list of projects. But it also coordinates projects from year to year. The big one that we've been trying to do is replace water mains before we reconstruct the street. So that is one of our goals with the Capital Improvements Plan. But to that point, not only are you approving the fiscal year '21 projects, but you are approving the general direction moving forward, such as the engineering agreements. We're working on doing the engineering for road projects the year before the construction. And so in fiscal year '21, we will start the engineering for the proposed streets bonding that will be happening or proposed to be happening next spring. On Table 1 on Page 5 lists the projects that are included in the streets bond package. Obviously, you'll see the engineering agreements before they're signed and before work starts. You'll also see the projects before they're let. But I wanted just to specifically point out the projects that we are intending to do with the street bond. And that includes reconstruction of 9th Street from Burlington to Washington, reconstruction of 23rd from Burlington to Tyler, but those are broken into two different funding sources. Part of it being funded through the bond and part of it paid through with West Industrial Park TIFT funds. We're also looking at the reconstruction of C Street from Burlington to Broadway, and then retaping or restriping Burlington Avenue through town and working to include bike lanes. And the big thing I want to point out there is there's still a lot of unanswered questions on how this is exactly going to work, which is why we do the engineering the year before. We want to try and do construction so that we can get all the details worked out. The big question in my mind is how to handle the bike lane as we go through the central business district. So there'll still be a lot of opportunities to review the projects, but I just wanted to point those out before we got too far into things.
Is that a bike lane in each direction?
Yes, both.
I thought it was going to be wide enough, but it is.
We, the few places that we have measured, it is wide enough, but we know that there are few spots that it's not wide enough. So we have to figure out, do we stop it? Do we transition? Do we make the lanes a little bit narrower? So there's a lot of, still a lot of design work to be done on that. The next thing I wanted to point out on Page 8 was the Surface Transportation Block Grant, which is the funding source for 32nd and 4th Street, as well as it was the reason why we have the Regional Planning Annual Support. The city gets around the $200,000 every year. We haven't used these funds for several years, which has allowed us to stockpile these funds and use them for some large projects. So I don't want everyone to think that we have $1 million every year available for these projects. It just happened to be that we're spending all of that STBG money in this proposed budget. And then lastly, I wanted to talk about the capital assets list. This was requested by the committee last year, and I found it very helpful in the budget process. The good news is that in doing the list and making the list, in doing the list of assets for the department, we found out that we are at a good level of funding for capital purchases and building maintenance. You have about $1.1 million budgeted for those in your fiscal year '21 with $5.6 million needed over the next five years. So we're in a really good place for the next five years on replacing those capital assets. The bad news is that I would expect years 5 through 10 that to go up. We're looking at about $2 million of fire trucks alone in years 5 through 10. So that is why the capital assets is part of your capital improvements plan so that we can continue to keep an eye on those longer-range items that are going to have to be worked into the budget. And that is really all that I wanted to point out. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, Melanie. The Capital Improvements Plan, I know it's intended to be a living document and modified as the fiscal year progresses. Is there any idea, do you have any idea what the band might be of plus or minus in terms of we're going to be needing more or we're going to be needing less, any range?
So the numbers stay the same, more or less the same because that's what we have budgeted for. We can only spend as much money as we have. Where it's the living document is when a project goes over budget or under budget. Just as the change order that you approved tonight, we had budgeted $210,000. The bids came in at $132,000. So we added a project to the list. If the bids come in high, we remove a project from the list. So it's more the number of projects rather than the dollar of projects that changes as projects are bid and delayed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Capital Improvement Plan.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you, Melanie. Okay, under the mayor's report, just, we had a work session on February 29. And there was an idea that Michael brought forth that we should only have a work session on every February 29.
Perfect. I thought that was pretty good.
Yeah. Anyway, I just had to bring a little humor. We talked about several things, but one of the things that we want to move forward with the property committee is a review of all the property that's within the city, the county property that's within the city, and then take a look at extraterritorial zoning a little more closely. So I think we want a motion to move that to the property committee.
I move to refer to the property committee the item extraterritorial zoning and annexation.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Also, one other item that came up was regarding the Natty Land. We will have that on your agenda in the next council meeting and reappoint that committee. City Attorney Report. Anything, John? Anything under Committee and Board reports? I don't think there's anything there.
John wants to announce something.
Yes, right. The O. Morrissey Law Office invites you to the St. Patrick's Day this Friday, March 13, 4:00 PM until at least 7:00. Downstairs at his office, so...
Don't you have any PPEs either?
Every year, good time had by all. And wear your green. Okay, City Administrator Report.
I'm not going to go over the memo that I sent this time unless anybody has any questions regarding that. We had a meeting with the county and council regarding our dispatch center on Thursday.[1569.63]